Good evening and welcome to the City of East Providence. Today is Tuesday, March 3rd, 2020. May we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Councilman Cahoon.
I'm here.
Councilman Morado.
Here.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Here.
Councilwoman Souza.
Here.
Council President Britto.
Next item, please.
Next item is motion to seal the minutes from executive session.
Can we have a motion to seal the minutes from the executive session?
So moved.
Anyone like to second that motion?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council President Britto.
Aye. Next item, please.
Consent calendar.
Anyone like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved as presented.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council President Britto.
Aye. Next item?
License approvals not requiring public hearing. The first is an application for special event alcoholic beverage, class F1. The type of event is a festival, Pierce Memorial Field. The date of the event is July 10th, 11th, and 12th, 2020. The applicant is East Providence Heritage Days and the representative for the applicant is Al Bacurty.
Is the applicant here at this time?
Yeah.
All the information, we gather, all the information? Any questions?
No questions. All the information's been turned in.
At the pleasure of the council, anybody have any questions we got?
Motion to approve.
No questions? We got a motion to approve? Anyone like to second that motion?
Second.
Second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council President Britto.
Aye. Next item, please.
Next item is the application for a carnival license. The type of event is a festival, Pierce Memorial Field. Date of event is July 10th, 11th, and 12th, 2020. Applicant is East Providence Heritage Days. Representative for applicant is Al Bacurty.
It appears that the applicant is not here. All the information in here?
Everything's turned in, everything's...
Okay.
Yes. Motion to approve.
At the pleasure of the council, anyone like to accept the motion or second? Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council President Britto.
Next item, please.
The next item is an application for special event alcoholic beverage, class F. Type of event is a dinner, Sacred Heart Church. Date of event, Saturday, March 14th, 2020. The applicant is Maria Duarte, Sacred Heart Church. Representative for applicant is Maria Duarte.
Is the applicant here at this time? No. We have all the information we need for this event? Or is there a representative who would like to speak on behalf of this? No?
Mr. President, it's an annual event that goes on. I haven't heard of any difficulties. Everything seems in order. I'd move approval.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council President Britto.
Aye. Next item, please.
Next item is public comment. The first person on public comment is Joe Grelo and the topic is handicap parking.
Mr. Grelo here?
Yeah.
Would you like to approach the podium, please? How are you, sir?
Good, and you?
Okay. You just want to state your name for the record, please?
Yeah, Joseph Grelo.
Okay.
The issue with the handicap illegal there with John Souza at 264, where he obtained a handicap because he was running the neighbors' parking in front of his house.
That was several meetings ago?
I believe so.
Yes.
I must have missed it.
Mm-hmm.
It all started with Jason, who lives right next door to me. He had his car parked there. And then John gave Jason a note saying to remove the car because it was dripping oil, like a little bit of oil. So I told Jason to park his car in my driveway. And we had no issues with John, so we figured we'd park our car up there, try to keep the peace between the neighbors, see if it would calm down, which it worked for a little while. Then, it was around Thanksgiving, he egged the car the first time, but I didn't have video of it. So we didn't call the cops, nothing. And then he told me to move the car or else he was going to call the cops, have the car removed because you can't park in front of his house. And I told him it was a public road, anybody could park. Then around Christmas, it was Christmas Eve night, I had people coming over the house, so I took all our cars, the cars that we had at the house, and left the driveway open because we have elderly people coming over so they could park the car there. And John decided to egg the car that night. And we went to the police on the 26th. They took pictures of the car all egged. But I didn't have the video at the time, which I believe you guys all saw the video.
I have it and I had forwarded, but I don't know if they all went through to the council.
So with that, then he also started throwing nails underneath Jason's car when he had it parked near his house. So we went back and forth with the cops, like calling them. They didn't really, they told us they really couldn't do much because of a silver matter. So then, all of a sudden, John decided to get a handicap parking that he does not use, hasn't ever used, that outside parking, parking in front of his house. We've sent you guys videos of him never parking out there. And he's just abusing the law, like he thinks he can do whatever he wants to neighbor. He started trouble with, first he was starting trouble with the guy on 260 Juniper, who lives to his right, with cleaning the yard and a lot of stuff. It was like a big mess. So now he started with Jason and myself. He had him come down to my house and tell me I couldn't park my truck in the street. So I do landscaping and some masonry, so I do drive a bigger truck, like a pickup truck duly with the trailer. So, and it has a backup alarm. So I leave early in the morning. I was leaving the truck parked on Juniper so that the car would not make noise when I pull up in the morning, backing up. So when the cops told him that the cars could be parked in front of his house, he decided to tell them my truck couldn't be in the street. So the cops said I was a commercial truck, I couldn't be in the street. So I started breaking the truck, putting it in there. Then it was like around Christmas time, I had, I was decorating the house, but I put the truck in front of Lion Avenue. It's the next morning, the cops were at the house telling me I couldn't have the truck on the street because John had called for the truck being there parked on the street. The guy's just a troublemaker, you know? I think he's lost his marbles on something. I don't know what's going on with him, but the road is a very tight road. And in the summertime, all the parking we can get on that street for cars to park on, when they have parties and all that stuff, we need some of the parking spot. And the handicap that nobody's using, which makes no sense, he's going to use his van that has a rear discharge, he's going to be parked downhill on Juniper. So when he takes the van that he's saying he's having a hard time, the wheelchair that weighs 400 pounds, he can't do it in his driveway, but he's going to do it downhill on Juniper. So when he loses control of the wheelchair, it's going to end up on Lion Avenue, cars are going to come by that does not stop at the stop sign or is not paying attention, kill the lady. Then the city's going to be sued because he put a handicap there. It's just like all bad all the way around.
So you're saying the handicap sign was put up in...
It spiked. It was a spike because he was running nobody parking in front of his house.
Okay.
He's a spiteful person.
So I have spoken with Joe and other neighbors and I have received multiple pictures, videos of the neighborhood of the person's house in question. And we do have it on the docket for a discussion and to consider rescinding. I find that based on the information that the neighbors presented, that it wasn't appropriate and it was more of a spiteful thing other than a necessity. So obviously, being a nurse, I'm always looking to make sure that we're, you know, addressing the public's needs, especially if it's a handicap accessibility. The ADA, American Disability Act is very important and that we make sure that we maintain and we provide those people with disabilities those rights. But if an individual doesn't necessarily warrant it, and in this case, it's not, it's his home, his residence, where he lives alone, the plate was for a girlfriend, significant other, who's actually a resident of a different town and city. So she doesn't register as a resident in the city nor does she have a vehicle that she uses. It doesn't seem pertinent.
No, yeah, she's only there, on his application letter, so you say she's there four to five days. She's only there on, she gets there late Thursday night, like around 6:00, and she goes back on Sunday at 6:00 at night.
Okay. So why don't we just explore that then?
Yeah.
We can explore that, sir, for you.
Okay.
Okay? That's all right with you?
Yeah.
Okay. Very good then. Thank you. Next person, please.
Next person on public comment is Jason Mello, also speaking about the handicap parking.
Evening, sir. Can you just state your name for the record, please?
Jason Mello. I live on 268 Juniper Street. I'm Joe Grelo's neighbor. I'm here to say that everything that Joe Grelo just stated is absolutely true. And I do have, I don't know, a copy of the note that he put on my vehicles regarding the oil. I don't know if you guys wanted to pass it. And also, I also have a copy of the letter that he wrote to Public Works stating why he needed the handicap parking in front of his house. I would just like to say that letter is completely false, like Joe said. She's only there three days a week for visitation, not four to five days. And I'm just here to clarify that everything that Joe said is completely true.
Okay. Well, thank you, sir. We'll definitely look into this as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You want this back, sir? Okay, in the meantime, we'll proceed. Any other public comment?
No, that concludes public comment.
Okay, that concludes public comment at this point in time. Next item, please.
Would you like this back?
Yes, please.
Next item is just a communication piece. It's mayoral appointments, council approval not needed, communication only. That's mayor's council on veterans affair, new members. We have George, I apologize for the last name, Lutecky, William McMahon, Christopher Lang, and Robert Winston.
So we have term start date here. What is that?
That was listed, just for record-keeping purposes, the docket was submitted before the information was gained, so that was left blank.
Okay.
Mark, Mark Britto did, yeah, Mark, yes, thank you. Mark did supply an email, but it was just after.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Yeah, so the new members, well, first of all, the Veterans Council, there was an amended executive order. We just expanded the council from 11 members to 13, just because we had more interest than we thought we would. But these members, some of them were members that needed to be sworn in, others were new members. For every member, it is a one-year term. So this meeting was on the 24th. So their terms will all expire next year on February 23rd.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I ran into one of the members from the council, Mr. Henry Capaco, and he had very positive comments to make about this new, this new effort. He said that the, he was extremely pleased with the way it was going and that everybody was excited about the direction of the council. So it sounds like it's off on a, on a good foot and I would move approval of these appointments.
Doesn't need approval?
Yeah.
If it doesn't, it's just for information.
FYI.
Okay. So the reports have been positive from a couple of the members that I've heard from.
Well, that'll be it. Mr. Britto? Oh, thank you, sir. Next item, please.
Next item is mayor communications, communication regarding the state of Bristol County Water Authority/CDM Smith Pipeline Project.
Good thing I didn't go anywhere. So I should have given all of you a copy of this. It's just a letter from the mayor. He's asking politely if the council would consider scheduling a special meeting as soon as practicable to allow our consultant, CDM Smith, as well as Bristol County Water Authority to appear to give two presentations on the state of our water distribution system. CDM Smith would be, they want to do an assessment of our pipeline between Cranston and Pawtucket Ave. We've never, Steve, we've never had one done? Yeah, we've never had one done. So we could really use that in-depth analysis. And then Bristol County, they're moving towards Phase Two, which would be that connection to Pawtucket. So they would like to keep us apprised of the situation if we were to go become partners with them.
Britto, would this be extensive presentations that you would prefer, like within the next council meeting or the one after that?
Yeah.
Oh, it's a workshop?
Yeah.
So it'll be outside and separate, beyond the council meeting? Okay.
Who would give the council more of a chance to be able to interact?
Is this a public workshop?
Yes.
Okay. Well, we could talk about having a date within the next week, maybe next week?
There is the charter meeting?
So I mean, at the pleasure of the council, or if you want to discuss this...
Just wondering...
...in the meeting and come up with a date, perhaps?
Wondering why we couldn't, is it a legal issue that we can't have this during, say, the next regular council meeting? We can't advertise a section of the meeting as the workshop?
If I may to the chair?
Please.
There'd be no legal issue preventing you from having that presentation at the same time as a council meeting? I believe the request may just be in regards to the amount of time it may consume, but there's no legal issue or obstacle to scheduling it that way.
Sure. No, I'm not opposed to a separate meeting, I just know we have several coming up and we've had a few, next week there's a workshop.
Does council, excuse me, does council want to sit on this until a lot of part of this meeting to decide?
Is there an urgency to the date? Is there a date that, Steve, we're trying to meet?
Yeah, we had tried to get this together, but I think at this point, we might be looking maybe sometime towards the end of March to the availability of consultants, so. I think probably best if, if maybe we provide a series of dates or weeks. And it very well could, we could split it up as well possibly and have one presentation at a council meeting. But I think if we provide some weeks and then, you know, council could maybe come up with some, some times.
Okay.
Mr. President, I'm just, you know, given that Tuesdays tend to be a day that we kind of reserve, I don't know if maybe March 24th or March 31st or one of those days would, if that would work for you guys, Steve, maybe we can do that on our end and...
Okay, I'll check that and...
And let us know?
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Cool. I don't, I'm not, I don't mean to speak for the rest of you guys, I just, I know Tuesdays are generally easier than other days.
Either one of those days work for me.
Yeah, Tuesdays are reserved better for me, given the...
Maybe the...
Just school committee.
Yeah, the 31st.
24th will be a meeting probably.
Yeah, so maybe the 31st because there won't be anything.
31st, I'll say the 31st?
Yeah.
And here, we can pretty much say, 20, the 31st sound good to the council?
It does, Council President.
Mr. Kudrow, is that good with you? 31st, we could shoot for? Okay, let us know. All right, thank you.
One more thing, may I just ask, can we do that at like seven-ish? Is that going to work? Okay.
All right, well, Mr. Britto's still up there, the second item for mayor's communication.
Second item has been awards for Pierce Field Basketball Courts rehabilitation and parking, police parking lot expansion.
I think that was actually just a mistake on the docket. That's just going to come up later for a vote.
Right. Okay. Very good. So that concludes mayor's communication?
May I ask one question about those items? Mark, are you prepared to address questions about those items, about the bids? Or should we do that now or...
Steve can.
Yeah.
You want to move that up?
Yeah, maybe, I mean, so we don't have to have Mr. Kudrow sitting here all night long.
Okay, let's do that. At the pleasure of the council, is that all right?
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Fine.
No one objects to it? Mr. Kudrow, would you like to approach the podium, sir?
To the chair? Which agenda item are we calling?
There, let me just find the...
Number four.
The police parking lot and the Pierce Field basketball. The ordinance, let me just...
So if you're following along, it's page five in your docket. And it's number four and number five, under the resolutions.
Thank you.
Dylan, you want to motion to move those up or are we okay moving them up as a...
The chair has the ability to move them up with the unanimous consent of the council.
Copy. Yeah, but I'm looking for the actual. All right, so Madam Clerk, would you like to read the resolution? We've all said, it's okay.
Item number four in the resolutions is resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for the police station parking lot expansion sponsored by Council President Britto.
Thank you. This was part of the agreement that was made with Providence Country Day to extend the... Would you consider that to be the eastern part of the parking lot for the existing police department?
I think it's the northern, northern end of the parking lot. It's the back end.
So the land itself was donated by Providence Country Day? And I don't know the exact dimensions of what we're looking to expand upon, so if you want to elaborate a little bit as to what the survey is on that property?
Yeah, I don't have the exact dimensions, but I do know that it does considerably expand the parking, which they now park off-site. So this will provide them with another, almost like...
So the off-site is directly across the street in the Philomonicus parking lot. Officers now have to park their car across the street in order to get their vehicles. With the expansion of this parking lot, this will no longer allow that, they'll be able to park right directly behind the police department.
I just have a couple of questions. So we originally, the capital improvement that we approved was $100,000.
Mm-hmm.
And I see that it's now just over $180,000. Where does the other eighty come from for this project?
It's coming from our police department funds.
It's coming out of their budget?
Yes.
Do we know a line item that's coming out of?
I do not.
Does anyone know what line item that's coming out of?
Don't, that was my question.
Is your, so I'd be interested to know where that eighty, what line item on the police department budget that's coming out of? And also, we still have a million point two sitting in capital improvements that we haven't approved. Why can't it come out of that versus the police department budget?
Why don't we, if we want, we can hold off on this and we can get the chief here to answer that question so we know exactly what line item that he, he's deciding to take that from. So I don't mind tabling it, excuse me.
If I may...
Yes, please.
To address the question of whether or not the $80,000 can come out of the capital fund, the remaining unappropriated funds, it can. We do have one such appropriation scheduled for next meeting, tentatively, perhaps another capital appropriation for the same meeting. There's a bit of a process you need to follow, but it's doable. I would say it probably takes about three, four-week time period to turn that around.
So in the meantime, we'll hold off, we'll table the discussion. We'll find out exactly what line item is coming from, from the police department, and we'll proceed at that point in time. So we'll hold off on that, Mr. Kudrow, for now.
We need a motion to table?
Yes, we do.
So moved.
Okay, so we have a motion to table?
Do you want to, do you want to table or continue till we get more information?
Either or.
Either's fine.
Yeah, either or.
Second that motion.
No, yeah. Roll call vote, Madam Clerk?
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council President Britto.
Aye. Thank you. Next resolution, please.
The next resolution is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for the Pierce Field Basketball Court rehabilitation sponsored by Council Vice President Rodrick.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. This was also a prior approval through our capital expense process. And I guess we're at the bidding process, we're ready to go now. And this, unlike the police parking lot, looks like it might be less money than what was appropriated. But there were six contractors submitted bids for the work. And the administration, the recommendation is for the low bidder, Hoffer Paving, which has done work previously in East Providence. The amount we had approved was $250,000. And the bid would enter into a contract with Hoffer Paving, the amount of $217,705.15. And my concern with projects like this is timing. And as we start to get through the winter, which really hasn't been a, a bad winter, we approach spring, and I know we've heard from Damian Ramis and others that have told us about the conditions of those courts there. So timing, to me, is of the essence. It looks like it's less money than what we had planned on, so that's, that's not a bad thing. And I'm sure these projects take some time and I'd like to see before you know it, springtime hits and we want to have it ready. So I'll hold off on a motion now in case there are other questions, but from the council, Steve wants to add anything to that, but be prepared to move approval.
All right, just quickly, that I would imagine that the paving is the large majority of the cost. Is there, the other costs for putting up, you know, poles and backboards and nets and stuff, is that nominal or...
No, it's not, it's not, it's not nominal, but it's definitely the cost, the majority of the cost is in the site prep and, you know, the court itself, the paving, and then the sport surfacing that they apply and the painting on top of the pavement surface.
Do we think that the rest of that work could be done within that remaining 30K or 40K or...
The rest of the work.
The rest of the work, painting and...
That's all included.
Oh, that is?
It's all included.
Okay.
This is, this is, this includes, this includes everything.
Soup to nuts.
Yeah, demo, paving, new posts, backboards, rims, fencing.
Does it also include padding around the posts?
Will include padding on the posts. It does not include, you know, new bleachers, which we may add later or like, Mr. Ramis was hoping to get scoreboards, you know, some accessories to, to the games.
But what about the bleachers? I mean, what kind of condition, they're not in the greatest...
They're portable aluminum bleachers and they're in decent shape now, yeah.
And will the fencing that's there, will it, because we know we have that field, the baseball, those fouls that pop back, will it be high enough or have some type of a brim where it protects people that are on the court?
It's going to be a 10-foot high fence, but we're also still looking at stringing a net along the baseball side of that third base side. Yes.
And Steve, one last question. You're, obviously, you're happy with the, the low bidder and the quality of the prior work here?
Yeah, the number's very good, very competitive, and, and it's a, it's a good time to award this. They're eager to get going. They recognize our, our tight timeframe, you know, because the Mohawks do have a very robust summer program. So, you know, hope to get this court usable for the summer.
I, I would move approval.
Very good. Thank you.
I would second with one more question. I think this is an easy one. Do, do we have a timetable, assuming we approve, and do we have a timetable for when it might be completed? Guestimate?
We're probably looking at sometime, I would say, early July.
Okay. Did I give a time for the Mohawk Summer League?
Yes.
So I think that's another reason why the sooner we do this, the better.
Not to start, not to start this program, but we've already, we've already adjusted with, okay.
All right, very good.
And then just one other. I just want to make aware to the council and the public that the remaining funds do go back into the capital budget account.
Correct.
At the end of the year, any allocated but unspent funds become unallocated funds. They move back into the general fund, and they'd be subject to the next, next budget cycle. During the budget year, they most likely would not be reallocated, but I can look into that specific question.
Okay. Thank you.
So we have a motion for approval by Councilman Marado. We have a second it by Councilman Kahoon. We'll call a vote, please.
Councilman Kahoon.
Aye.
Council Vice President, or Councilman Marado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Council President Fritto.
Aye.
Thank you. Steve?
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Next item is under Council Communications. If you're following along, that's on page three. It's an update regarding results from the Weaver Library Community Meeting, which happened on Tuesday, February twenty-fifth at 6:00 PM. Councilwoman Souza.
So I want to thank all the residents that attended the meeting at Weaver Library. It was well-attended. I also like to thank the police chief, the sergeant, and my fellow councilmen, Marado and Rodrick for also attending. I think it was a great dialogue. A lot of concerns that were brought up and discussed had to do with trash and trash disposal along the street and what constitutes as being picked up and stuff like small appliances or mattresses. How do we dispose of those things? So I think some education. And I know the Public Works Department does do a good job at sending little pamphlets around to remind people what is recyclable and what is not, and where to drop off these small appliances. We also discussed various things like speeding, which we did have a public meeting here also last Wednesday that went into great detail about that. One-way parking, some other neighborhood concerns had to do with lighting and pedestrian crosswalks, in need of re-striping lanes that are not visible currently, or new areas that would benefit from pedestrian crosswalks that are not currently in place. Other things had to do with the Forbes Street landfill, which I know after the meeting, the administration did post that they were opening up the landfill for residents to dispose of their yard debris and that the yard debris pickup was going to be moved up earlier than what is normally scheduled since the weather has been really nice and people are already out there starting to do some spring cleaning, that they would be able to be picked up. Because as it stands, we currently have people who are leaving their yard debris out on the sidewalks awaiting for pickup, and the city wasn't prepared per their routine schedule to do so, so that has also moved up. I will be hosting more monthly meetings or bimonthly meetings, so I will keep everybody posted on when that will take place. It most likely will happen at the Weaver Library since it is generally and centrally located. It may be on a weekend day to better accommodate people's work schedule, maybe a mid-afternoon. So again, thank you all for attending. It was great feedback, and we look forward to continuing to do that.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Next council communication, please.
That's item B, and it's an event announcement for International Women's History Month event at City Hall, Wednesday, March fourth, eleven AM to one PM. Councilwoman Souza.
So as we know, the council approved March to be Women's History Month. Tomorrow, we're hosting, I'm hosting the annual event, pending any news otherwise from the school. We have our honorary guest speaker is Rhode Island Secretary of State Nellie Gabeel. We're celebrating the Nineteenth Amendment. It's a hundred-year celebration, the vigilant woman of the vote. So all are welcome. It's free to the public, open to anyone who wants to come. Our biggest audience are the middle school and high school students, female students. I don't know where that lies now with stuff that's going on in the news with the school department, so we're waiting to find out about that. There is lunch that is provided, so I welcome all to attend. It's always a great event. Again, eleven to one.
Thank you. Next council communications. Glad to see you.
Item C is City Council Solicitor RFP, which is Request for Proposal Discussion. Councilwoman Souza.
So we've had long discussions or multiple discussions about the council having legal legislative representation. Currently, the city has a city solicitor, an assistant city solicitor. We have our assistant city solicitor, Mr. Conley, here with us tonight. And we know that they have a lot to do for the city. And I know that a lot of, personally, myself, I've had a lot of time lapse on things, and it's of nobody's fault other than, everybody has a busy schedule and other jobs other than just being here for this one city to work on. So I wanted to reopen the discussion with the council, given that we're moving forward with charter changes, ballots, questions on the ballot. I know our assistant city solicitor was on overseeing the charter commission that was put in place a couple of years ago. And though I appreciate the work that he's done and the great job that he provided that commission, I would like to have, open the consideration of having perhaps somebody who has no ties, so to speak, to the city, who's not, who's unbiased, a neutral person to look at the questions, maybe vet some of our concerns out. Not, again, offense to anybody who, Mr. City Solicitor, that, that you would be unbiased, but I think the council should consider or may consider having our own legislative attorney. I have a lot of things that go back and forth. One opinion is of, you know, one solicitor has one opinion, another solicitor has another opinion. It's all subject to interpretation. I feel that it's important that the city council has somebody who is neutral to the city and doesn't have any specific stake in reports to the council itself in a legislative way. I'm not sure what the feeling for the counts, the rest of the council is, what the appetite for that is. I would personally welcome any attorneys or legislative or municipality experienced attorneys to please forward any resumes or if they're interests to me. I'd be open to seeing what's out there of any interest to work with anybody in regards to some of the things that I have in mind for, as far as my legislative items moving forward.
I guess when we had this discussion during the budget season, and I remember we had allocated funds underneath the council specifically for our own legal services, if you will. I, I think it was my understanding that we would be looking to have Mr. Conley perform those services. That's sort of what my, my head was. I thought that we had kind of based the budget and, and the calculations there on, on discussions we had had over, you know, his typical rates and stuff like that. My, my preference would be, I mean, I guess if we were moving toward choosing a solicitor to represent solely the council, I think my preference would be that Mr. Conley would do it simply because he, A, understands all the kind of twists and tweaks that, you know, we've kind of run into over the last few years. You know, the, the charter is a big one. Certainly, you know, the, the ongoing LED discussion is a big one. And, and having, you know, understanding of, of the state law that he's demonstrated in our specific cases, I think that's, that's kind of where, where I would lean.
And I think Mr. Conley does a great job. It's, again, nothing personal. I work very well with him. He responds well. I do have some concern when it is, so we've allocated services outside of the legal department's budget for additional professional services. I don't feel as that, as though that was reallocated for professional services just to solely pay our assistant solicitor. So for instance, he's sitting here tonight and our city solicitor is not. So is that coming out of that line item in the council budget? Or is he being paid under his, the law department who's obligated to represent the city council during a council meeting?
Well, I, I think either way, it doesn't really matter what budget it comes out of or if he wants to charge this evening for the budget that we have and then the work that he does on the other side, he charges to that side as well. And I, just going back to that time when we had this discussion, and I, I thought it was a good idea to have Mr. Conley as well. And I think, if I'm not mistaken, I had made that suggestion, that we have a, a legal council right under our nose as opposed to going out for RFP or speaking to other attorneys that we can utilize and tap into the attorneys that we have here. Like you said, he has the experience with the charter. He's worked on the, on the numerous city solicitors. And I never found an issue or problem, or more importantly, a concern, that if I had an ordinance or resolution that was presented to him, that as far as time is concerned, that was never an issue. It was just, I just didn't see any concern with respect to anything that I was, that I had asked him to help support, answer questions, and we have conversations, and he answers those questions. But in the past and still today, I just don't have any, any issues with that or with him as well as far as being able to work, whether it's on the city side or the city council side. So I, like, like Councilman Kahoon, feel the same exact way with respect to having Mr. Conley represent the council.
Mr. President, if I may. I, I too recall this earlier conversation. We were talking about legal services and I, I think Attorney Marcello's done a nice job, and that's not the issue here tonight. But, so there was this discussion about, well, Attorney Conley would represent us at council meetings, and that Attorney Marcello would be more administration office. And there was some drift to go in that direction. But we, we kind of have, have left it alone without coming to a decision on that. I want to ask Mr. Conley, I don't want to inject you into the discussion any, any more than is appropriate, but if I recall, didn't you and I have a conversation about this? Or maybe you did with an open council meeting and that because of the charter? That there, there were some issues that might prevent that? So as, prevent that you would be the sole attorney here at council meetings for the council? And that there was some charter?
The charter language, and I'm working off the top of my head, I apologize. It, it says the solicitor and to the effect, the assistant solicitor shall represent the mayor and the council. So the Supreme Court has routinely held that shall is a mandatory clause. Thank you. So that means that Mike Marcello and myself are the attorneys for the council. We shall represent the council. So how that would apply outside of Mike and I, I'm not really sure. But regardless of what happens outside Mike and I, Mike and I still represent the council. We're obligated to do that as a part of our office. Specifically, who represents you sitting here at these meetings? Thus far, it's really been a scheduling decision amongst the solicitor's office. I, I think Mike and I work very well together. If the council wants to have one of us at certain meetings or others, I know that Mike and I would work together to figure that out. I, I hope that answers your question.
It, it does. Basically, in a nutshell, you, you both are, that we couldn't or shouldn't or don't have to have a delineation where Attorney X is the city council, Attorney Y is, is the administration and the mayor.
So the charter would prevent that. It's shall, and it's conjunctive. So it's mandatory that the solicitor represents both the council and the mayor.
Okay, so we, we probably could not designate Attorney X or Attorney Y the way I described it. Now, let me ask a different direction. If, if in the process of us coming up drafting as a council charter questions for the ballot and charter changes and amendments that, that we may be interested in, would that be a place where we might bring in an attorney other than the two that are representing the city now? So if we wanted, as Councilwoman Souza said, a third party eye on the situation or someone independent, not that you're not independent in thought, but, you know, someone who hasn't been involved with our charter, someone who would be a fresh neutrality that would guide us on charter language, is that even needed? I don't know. First of all, is that a possibility? Could we do that? And I don't know if the funding is in the budget for that. Just for the charter process, and then they would no longer be with us.
So I, I haven't researched that question. The, the one thing that the definitive answer is, is even if that is done, Mike and I remain the representative for the council.
Okay.
I got a question. I mean, let's call out, how can I say this, very reserved and politely. We've had many conversations on this council for the past one-plus years, right? Who serves who? Does the solicitor serve, you know, the, the city? Or does the solicitor serve the mayor? Does the solicitor serve the council? And, and I really like you, Dylan, as far as you've been straightforward with every topic that I've given you, whether I like it or not, you give me an answer, and that's how it should be. But at the end of the day, we all know who appoints and who fires the solicitor, right? My frustration this past year, one, one good example was the department head issue, right? And repeatedly asked, can we fix this through ordinance right here at the seat? And the repeated answer was no, until I had to find that, that language in the charter, myself, me, I had to find that language when our city solicitor kept telling me that it was impossible to do. And consulted with Dylan, and sure enough, yeah, you can. And we did, and we passed the, the ordinance. That, to me, is very frustrating. So I feel, I feel at this point that we don't have a city solicitor that works completely on our behalf. So I concur with Councilwoman Souza's concerns, and I also concur with what has just been mentioned. But the idea is, and I think this, this is more of a charter change conversation, should the solicitor or a solicitor be a council appointment. We can, we can call it all we want. Yeah, they serve at the pleasure of the city. Okay, well, that hasn't been proven to me this past year completely. So that's right, but that's my opinion and feeling on that.
But, but you agree that would have to be a charter change? Nothing we could do tonight or next meeting or?
If, if assistant solicitor, Dylan Conley is saying that that's what it is, then I believe what he's saying.
Right.
And that's, and if that's going to be the appetite of the council putting forward that ballot question, you know, after discussion and workshops, so be it. But that's how I see it, and that's how I'm calling it.
So again, just to kind of close circle, it has nothing to do with any personal issues because, again, I work well with our legal team. I don't have any personal issues with them. I do, however, have things that need to be taken care of in the city. I have ordinances, resolutions, concerns that I look into. And the first year until we had this long-winded discussion and our assistant city solicitor stepped up... discussion, and our assistant city solicitor stepped up to help, they were not being addressed. And even though we do have him doing his due diligence, he's still one person amongst five council members, and he wears many other hats in his own professional career, which is fine, and I'm sure that doesn't affect what he does here with us. But when you don't get called, you don't get answers back, or you're told that something's not gonna, there's a lack of communication, or delayed communication, it just becomes a little frustrating and troublesome that I can't, I feel as though I cannot get my, the things that I need from my constituents or for the community done in a timely manner. And I know everything takes a little bit of time, so I don't expect things to be done in a week or two. But I do expect professional courtesies and conversations if there is something that's going to be hindered, or it's going to take a little bit longer. So that's really the reason for having this conversation tonight about a solicitor. Obviously, I don't think that we would be putting an RFP out for one. I don't even, to be honest, know what that would entail or look like. It was more of just putting it out that I really do think that the council needs a legislator that is going to be solely directed with the council, and does not have to answer to any other chain of command while trying to help the council do the council's work for the community. And I'll end with that.
No, I think a lot of us agree with that, but it does seem that the charter prevents that specific action. At least according to-
I don't know, because I think like any other department, you can hire somebody, I mean, if other departments can hire a professional service, then I don't see why the city council is unable to hire a professional service. It seems like more and more things are taken away from the city council ability to do their job for the community. But it's okay for other departments and other, you know, the administration to do whatever they need to get their job done, or their agenda items. But the council is being tied down to what their limitations are. So that's that.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Council President.
Next item for council communications under letter D.
The next item is Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank Clean Water and Drinking Water Bond Savings Allocation of the $503,326 refund, and that would be Councilman Morato.
So I had reached out to Mr. Paul Lubo, inquiring as to, back on February 20th, inquiring as to what, what does this mean for the city, and what we can use this money for? And if I could, through the chair, if I can have Mr. Lubo just come up and just explain it to us, and what we can do with it.
Please, Mr. Lubo. Good evening.
So you got a big check, and it was a real big check, $503,000 from the infrastructure bank. You were part of a general refunding. A lot of other communities were part of it. When Councilman Morato asked me what can be done with it, I fortunately had done some research for another community, and basically, I believe that what goes with that community goes for East Providence or anybody else. These are the people I spoke with. I spoke with the infrastructure bank council. I spoke with our fiscal advisor from Southwest. I spoke with a bond council from Unzaket. And I spoke with auditors from Unzaket. And I asked pretty much the same questions. What can you do? There are rules, and I'll go through them. The main rule is the refunding has to be spent in the enterprise fund, not general fund, the enterprise fund for which generated it. So the enterprise fund that the bond was for. So how does that break out for you? So basically, $309,000 of your $503 was for your water fund, and $194 was for your wastewater fund. So that $503 now has to be split in that manner in the enterprise funds. The second thing is, each of the directors, the finance directors, had to sign, it was a pretty short agreement, but in that agreement was a clause that basically said, it had to be, let's say, the water fund, it had to be spent in support of water projects. And then the wastewater fund said pretty much the same thing, had to be spent in support of wastewater projects. So those are the two main rules. It's interesting what it doesn't say, and I asked a ton of questions to these people. It doesn't say it has to be a new project. It doesn't say it has to be a unique project. It doesn't say it has to be something that was either budgeted or unbudgeted. It's pretty broad as to what it can be within those first two guidelines that I gave. And I asked questions like, well, can it, let's say you were budgeted to spend, let's say, $200,000 on pipe construction for your water mains. Can you spend that money from the refunding? And then can you either delay a rate increase, or apply that rate increase to a surplus balance, or something like that? The answer was yes, you can do it. You know, and almost every question I asked was, yeah, you can do it, because, you know, they didn't tightly constrict how you can spend it. The only thing I got a no for, is I said, well, can you issue a rebate to your water or wastewater users? The answer was no, you can't do that. So you can't just cut a check for everybody. But aside from that, it's pretty broad. You can, you know, spend that money on new projects, what new projects do you have? You know, I spoke with the mayor, and you have, on the water side, you have the alternative water source that you're looking at. Can you use the money for that? Sure. On the wastewater side, it's a little tougher, because your wastewater is managed by an outside vendor. But you're also looking, you know, maybe towards either changing the vendor, or altering the vendor, and you have a study. Could you use it for that study? Sure. Can you use it for that vendor? Part of the vendor's contract is used for capital projects, and you pay, you know, part of your fee for that. Can you use it for that? Sure. So, you know, it's pretty broad, what you can do. You know, it's basically, you know, what you and the administration comes up with.
Mr. Lubo, could it be used to pay down the bond?
I'd forgotten that one. Two communities are using the refund to apply against water and sewer wastewater debt that they already have. So they're saying, hey, it was used for bond payments before, that's where we want it to go. And we're going to amortize that amount over what's left in the bond payment. Now, the amortization is, I'm not sure they had to do that. I asked an auditor whether or not it had to be amortized, and they haven't even thought about this yet. So maybe it does, maybe it doesn't. Maybe you can just apply it to some bond payment that you have to do. But the answer is, yeah, you can do it.
So in the absence of, if I may, I'm going to finish, Mr. President. In the absence of the ideal idea, it doesn't sound like, if we were to establish, say, a capital improvement fund under each of those enterprise funds, then that would be an appropriate use of this money?
Yeah. You already have that, in a way. If you look at your water fund, I mean, there's line items for capital improvements within your budget. So you could supplement that, you can create a whole new line item for it. You know, if you thought of something else that you want to do, capital-wise, that's not in the budget, yeah, you can do that too.
And I ask that question because, I mean, we know, I mean, one of the reasons that I think the mayor has been so gung ho about the alternative water sources, you know, we know the situation with our water source. We know it reaches back to Cranston. We know that's an old pipeline, et cetera. You know, is it smart to simply set that money aside for the inevitable rainy day, when something goes wrong with one of those, you know, with the water, you know, for the water enterprise fund particularly?
Yeah. I mean, it's your choice. You could apply it to the project that you're looking at, you know. I mean, from what I gather, and Mr. Kudel could have attested this, I mean, you're looking at, you know, stuff that's underneath the, pipes underneath the water, and a new source of supply. You have a lot of needs that you're going to be doing a study for, or, you know, things like that. Hey, you can use it for that. You can, I guess, anything. Anything that, except, you know, you can't rebate.
Question, Mr. President. It seems pretty general news for the enterprise fund, so that's a good thing. And I want to clarify for the record, because there has been some constituent commentary that this isn't actual cash, that this was some kind of a bookkeeping thing. This is cash money. We received $500,000, thereabouts, in a check with cash.
Yeah, I believe so.
It's not, it's not just a budgetary tool, or, it's money.
Yeah, you can spend-
It's a refund.
You can spend it, because if there wasn't cash, then, you know, you-
Right. So for those out there who've been questioning that, I think that's pretty clear. Now, thank you.
So that money could, as you said, it could actually be used for that company that's doing the consulting company, CDM Smith?
Yes.
And then the other, the sewer money, which is a drop in the bucket compared to that project, but cap in the, like, project like cap in the sewer, primary tanks at the sewer plant.
If that's something that you would be paying for through your fee with SUEZ, or?
Yeah, okay. Thank you. I just wanted, I just wanted to have clarification on that, in case people had questions like, no, where's this money coming from? Is that a mistake? Now, it's out there, everyone knows about it. So, thank you, Mr. Lubo.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Mr. Lubo. Any other questions from the council? Thank you, Mr. Lubo. We remain on the council communication on the letter E, which is a discussion. It's on here for East Providence Resilience. And this is by Councilman Brito. And I put this on because I am a part of a committee in Providence, Providence Resilience Partnership. And it's a committee that consists of perhaps 25, 30 people, educators from Brown University, RISD, Rhode Island College, URI, business owners in the downtown immediate area. And essentially, the Provo is involved with this as well. And essentially, we meet and we discuss resiliency in the city of Providence. In an event that, you know, a storm comes about, and there's a stormwater surge, what type of plans does the city have to mitigate these issues and problems? Rising sea levels is another issue and concern. And climate, and climate change. And we see this all throughout the country. We see it to our neighboring states in Massachusetts primarily. And Boston, they have, they literally have various groups in the city of Boston and the surrounding areas, that they are really compiling all these studies about resilience, and storm waters, and rising sea levels. And in a conversation that I had with Mr. Fazio on Saturday, I asked him, you know, come to think of it, does a city have any type of plan going forward? I recall during the first council term that I served, city hall is used as command center. And one of the things we had appropriated during that time is emergency generator. So we had the discussion, is there an emergency generator? In an event that something goes south? And we've heard, all heard of the 100-year flood, and we all know that it's no longer the 100-year flood. I mean, 10 years ago, not even 10 years ago, we had a major flood here, the 10-Mile River and Agonon Park, that overflowed all the way in through the park and onto the basketball courts. We know the streets that got flooded here. And this is something that's no longer a 100-year flood. This is right around the corner from us. Whether you believe it or not, it's here. We see it all the time on news in certain states and certain cities around the country. We see what happened when the levees broke in New Orleans with the hurricane. Was there a plan? There wasn't a plan. So my question, do we have a plan here in an event that something, in an event that there is a storm surge? Does the city have some type of plan of action going forward? And how will we mitigate this? You know, I indicated about the emergency generator here. I know there was one, if I'm not mistaken, there was one at one point in time, or there was talk about one happening over at the senior center. Do we have that there? There was the robo calls, and I know that the director of administration has sent me over something today. Unfortunately, didn't really get the opportunity to read it. But in an event that there's an emergency, I know at one point in time, you know, the city was able to, like the school department, robo calls, make these robo calls. How updated is that information when it comes time for phone calls? A lot of people since then have switched over from landlines to cell phones. Do we have them on record? But I'm willing and ask Mr. Fazio, if you can just come up and just speak briefly to what type of a plan that the city has going forward. And I know you're looking towards one. I know we have one, actually. I don't know to what extent. But I'm hoping that you can elaborate on the plan that we have, and what direction do you see the city going forward in the next, say, five years of developing a serious plan to, in an event that we do have these issues that confront us?
Sure. Thank you. And, yeah, we do, we do have elements of a climate resilience plan. We're pulling it together. When I first got here, I had the staff prepare for me the work that the city's done to date. And I can have this email to the council. It's about a six-page document that sort of, you know, is a compilation of different climate resilient type of things that we've talked about. And you're absolutely right, Councilman. Since 2010, the city's had four federal disaster declarations since 2010. It's, you know, in 10 years, it's four federal disaster declarations. That's very, I mean, that usually would happen once, maybe 25 years, but to have four in a decade is a sign that, you know, obviously, those climate issues are very real. So with that, parts of this study is, the city does publish a hazard mitigation plan, which identifies a host of issues, including sea level rise, flooding, culverts, things of that nature. This was done in 2017. It's on our city's website. I can again send you the link. It's part of the emergency management agency office, which was part of the planning office up until about two years ago. The fire chief is taking over that role completely. We have another, a bunch of other projects, including shoreline restoration at Rose Larissa Park. We're doing the Saving Point Stormwater Management Program. We're working with Save the Bay on improving water quality at Narragansett Bay, and, you know, improving the work at the 100-Acre Cove. The East Providence Wastewater Facility was modeled for a flood, flood hazard modeling analysis in 2016. We're working with an entity called the Trust for Public Land, using a GIS system that helps us map out which parts of the city are most prone to flooding, things of that nature. DPW works on a capital improvement project that works on a lot of improvements to drainage and culverts, and things of that nature to prevent flooding. So there are elements there. I can certainly send this to you that provides more detail. But going forward in 2020, as we get the comprehensive plan underway, and that RFP has been sent to purchasing, so we hope to have it on the streets fairly soon, the climate change is going to be a big part of our comprehensive plan, which will be the first time that's ever done in the city. And lastly, I've sent you recently some ongoing workshops that are taking place, elected for elected officials and staff. We're attending those very regularly. We're applying for a grant at Rhode Island DM for making some- We're applying for a grant at Rhode Island DEM for making some improvements, you know, to combat sea level rise and coastal erosion and things of that nature. So we do have a program. It probably has to be tightened up and put in a, you know, in a, in a better fashion. But there are elements out there. We work closely with the Department of Public Works, DMA folks at the fire department. Captain, Chief Quick was supposed to be here tonight to talk about the Command Central and the Code Red, but he had a family issue. He couldn't make it, so. But I know Mr. Kudus has just recently indicated that there is an emergency generator here at the city hall, so.
Oh, there is. Oh, okay. Very good. Oh, yes. All right. Very good. That's good to hear. Well, thank you. And, you know, this is important. It's important to me. It's important to our city. It's unfortunately, it's something we all don't, just don't pay attention to for the most part. And if you go on DEM's website, you can show where the flood zones, areas are, and with the waterfront district and promoting the waterfront district and building and expanding upon our tax base and waterfront, you know, coastal resources as a mapping zone as far as how we build on, within a 200-foot radius from the water. I mean, these are very extremely important things and how we move forward as a, as a city, even in our economic development.
Absolutely. Yeah, we've met with Mr. O'Rourke from the Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank recently. We're going to be engaged in them on our climate resiliency plan going forward. So it's clearly going to be a priority going forward. And I, I can get the link to this document to the council tomorrow morning. So if you want to take a look at the hazard mitigation plan that's in place. This also allows communities, cities in our, houses in our community to buy, to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program because we do all this work and they're able to buy flood insurance to protect their homes at the subsidized.
Sure. And thank you. And I know Mr. O'Rourke has been, he's presented a couple of times to the committee as well.
He touched on some good points, like emergency generators and shelter areas, which just made me wonder, does a city have an ELP plan in place at the moment?
You have to be, I'm not sure what that means.
Emergency Operations.
I'm sure that, I'm sure they do. Again, I think that's why Chief, Chief Quick would have been able to, you know, answer those type of questions. He was planning to be here. I talked to him in the morning and then in the afternoon, he said he wasn't able to make it. I'm sure that we can get back to you with that information. I'm almost certain that there are procedures in place. Or when I was even city manager, you know, a long, long time ago, we had those procedures in place and a command central and a dispatch plan, things of that nature.
If I'm not mistaken, Sunday, he did mention that, that there is one in place, and don't quote me on that. And he heads up that as well.
I'm pretty sure. Every community is a boilerplate, you know, type document from EMA. Currently updating mine right now myself, it's a 500-page document. It's all the points that you mentioned, communications, everything's in there. But it'd be good to know if it's updated. You know, those things do tend to go, you know, get stale. And we're adding the, this topic to it, which I think it's a great idea, so.
More and more cities and towns across the country are really looking towards this, are looking at their resilience.
Absolutely, yeah.
I'll be interested to look at that a few more.
Sure, yeah. I can get the link out to you. But it's on, it's been on our website and it's a pretty comprehensive document. It's up for, I think we have to, we have to do it again in 20. It's good for five years, so we're, we're coming in on redoing it all.
And thank you for that information. It's just an all-day seminar.
Yes, right. I know, yeah. But there are other opportunities coming up in the staff. You know, my staff, in fact, Thursday's coming up as a meeting at, a group is meeting with federal officials to discuss how communities can participate in the federal buyout program. If communities, properties are constantly being flooded, then, you know, how do we make those houses eligible to participate in federal buyout programs? So we have a staff member attending that session Thursday. So we're always looking for those opportunities.
Thank you, Mr. Fazio. Next item, which is, which would be F, and we will table that for the next meeting.
The next item is under new business, and that's reports of other city officials. The first item is Claims Committee Report. Solicitor, Assistant Solicitor Dylan Conley.
Thank you. There were five votes in the claims in executive session. All were unanimous.
Thank you, sir. Next, next item?
The next item is Handicap Parking Removal, 264 Juniper. Steve Kudus, sponsored by Councilwoman Souza.
So this was something that we discussed, well, we didn't really discuss, voted on a couple of meetings ago. Two gentlemen from the community, neighbors of the applicant, just testified during public comment regarding that it was more of a malice intent to receive, to get the sign placed there in front of the homeowner's property, that it wasn't necessarily, it wasn't for the homeowner itself, more so a significant other that comes for a few days to the city, who is a resident of another city. I'd like to enter into the docket, the community, the neighbors in the immediate to this gentleman have signed a petition and written a letter to the council. So I'm going to pass it down to the city clerk. All in the same agreement that this was not for a real necessity for the household as intended throughout the community, when people do apply for it, in that it was more of a way to hold the front of his home empty so that nobody else could park there. And I find that disturbing, to be quite honest, because there are a lot of people who, who need handicap parking, and that is their right to, to have it. But we also know that people like their property, and they don't want anybody in front of their property, and they think that they own it. But it is community property. It is for your neighbors and anybody else who needs to park roads in the center of the city. This is one of the issues that we talked about at the community meeting. In the center of the city, the streets are narrow, cars have difficulties, parking on both sides, so you have limited parking on one side. So to hold up a spot in front of somebody's home that essentially can fit two vehicles, so it's not just one vehicle, it's taking up two parking spaces in that neighborhood, just because you want to, you know, not get along and be a good neighbor, I think is disturbing on many levels. And had I known this prior to us approving it last, two weeks ago or the previous council meeting, I wouldn't have been in favor of it, quite frankly. So.
Is this the gentleman that was sitting over here with his girlfriend at the time?
Mm-hmm.
No, who applied for the handicap?
There was nobody applying. Nobody came to us.
Okay.
Nobody came in front of us.
So don't, wouldn't you, Mr. Kudus, isn't there, wouldn't the gentleman would have to have some sort of a handicap license in order to apply for a handicap parking?
Right. So in the application, it was not his plaque. It was his significant other's plaque, who is not a resident of the city. She lives in another city. So he, I'm assuming, takes hers and puts it on his vehicle for whenever he needs to use it. But the community, the neighbors have proven that he's never used his parking spot, nor does he use it, even though the signs.
But the application itself for that handicap, whatever it is that they give you, the tag, it's in, it's in her name?
Her name.
And not his?
Correct.
Oh, so I don't, I see this as a no-brainer personally.
Right, right. And so that's what I'm saying. Had I known that previously, I don't think I would have approved, you know, I know I wouldn't have approved it personally.
Is it possible? I've been saying this from the day we were elected. And I'm only speaking from experience, right? We get these petitions sometimes, and no fault to Mr. Kudus. I'm sure he has a lot more important things to go around than checking handicap, you know, requests. They, there is a better way of doing this for us, you know, vetting this stuff out. By the time I get to the council, we can know if there's a driveway that's accessible for that person that's requesting that petition. We can know if the handicap placard belongs to the resident who's submitting the petition and not some other family member. There is, there is a better way. And I've tried explaining this before. Now we're kind of backtracking a little bit. And I don't know if Mr. Kudus can explain briefly what that process is, if you don't mind? Is that possible?
Yeah, sure. I would think there's an application the person who's applying for it would have, that application in their name with their address. And I think it would be kind of straightforward if I'm, if I'm not. Please educate me on this.
Okay. Well, we'll start with this initial, this application in particular. It's true. It's, it wasn't in his, his name, but that was right in his application. And he did write that, that it was for his girlfriend and stayed his girlfriend is at the house for, you know, X amount of days. And the, having the spot would make it easier access for him to move wheelchair, you know, into his van or, or truck, you know, whatever. So. And, and reading the disability certificate, it does allow usage for, to put someone else's car if you're the passenger. So that is, that is a permissible use. You know, where it gets maybe, you know, lack of a better term, dicey, is we're just taking people for their word on the usage of these. And I really don't know, you know, the origin of, you know, why we even allow these in the first place. You know, because most folks do have driveways. You know, in some instances, you know, we did recently approve one on Ivy Street.
Vine.
Vine Street. And, and the reason was for the, the bus to pick up her son, and it leaves that space available, you know, and sort of ease of access. You know, that's, that was their reasoning. Now, am I there going and videotaping to make sure this actually happens? And, no, you know, so. But it's not the first time where, once we put up signs, we've had the neighbors come forth and say, well, there's been issues between us and the neighbor. They don't want us to park there. And it becomes, you know, that kind of issue.
So let me ask you, Steve, does someone actually go out, so when they, someone from whatever address, they submit that application, right? Like an application requesting, you know, handicap parking spot? And is, he's, and these are the reasons why. Does someone actually go out to that address and actually look and see, is there a driveway? And what's the reason, if there is one, what's the reason why? And maybe knock on some other doors? Because that's something that we do. And we find out a lot of times, not very often, but we do get those cases where we find they just don't want anyone parking there.
Yeah. We do go out and check it. Are we knocking on doors and asking other people? No. Are there notices that go out to, to the general neighborhood? Hey, look, there's going to be a handicap parking sign here, you know, proposed. You know, if you have any issues, you know, please let us know. That does, all that work for, for that kind of effort doesn't, does not happen. No.
Right.
It used, this used to be an actual, right now, if you look at it, it's not, they don't go in as ordinances. It's, it's basically, I guess, I, if a resident comes to me, I just get the paperwork. I present it to you. You approve it, then the sign goes up. It used to be an actual ordinance where it took two passages, your first hearing, second hearing.
Is there any reason why that changed for your?
I, I was here when it changed, and I don't know why they, they changed it at the time. Maybe just to make it, you know, to move them along quicker rather than taking a month to put a handicap parking sign up.
Well, I mean, I don't have a problem with the way. I think it just needs to be this type of, just like any other sign in the city that has to go through its process. I think this is one of those because it does restrict an area that it should, we should have maybe a couple of weeks' notice. So not necessarily that you have to vet it out as your department itself, but maybe the council member in that ward can go and talk to the neighbors. Because again, you don't send out, because that was a question I was going to ask you. Is there any notification that's sent out? And I can see how that could be costly and not really. But one of us, you know, representing our constituents could certainly go and talk to the homeowner, talk to any of the neighbors and see if there's any issues so that we don't run into these problems.
I mean, maybe, maybe something even, you know, when I was listening to the two gentlemen speak, a request from my office even to the police department to see if there's been issues.
Right, right.
Something like that. Those issues would come very apparently away.
Right.
And that's part of the vetting process and that other community, you know, we do that.
To make sure that it's not, to make sure that it's legitimate, that they actually do need a handicap. Right.
So this is on as a vote? Is it going to continue that way?
Yes, sir. Yep. Please. So I move to remove the handicap parking sign on 264 Juniper Street, given the testimony and evidence presented to myself and to the council.
Second up. Madam clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilman Kahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Roderick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council President Brito.
Aye. Thank you. Next item, please, which would be resolutions.
Yes. Under resolutions, it's the resolution requesting traffic study at Pawtucket Avenue and Waterman Avenue intersection, sponsored by Councilwoman Souza and Council Vice President Roderick. So, it doesn't matter. I'll take it. Thank you. So the, I want to apologize. The resolution that is posted on the Secretary of State and before the council is not the correct resolution. And I did pass down the amended resolution, and will ask the city clerk to enter into the record as the one that's going to be up for passage. So essentially, the, this traffic study came from general concerns throughout the community of the Pawtucket Ave and Waterman Ave intersection. Turning on to Waterman Ave has been difficult for vehicles, given the high traffic that comes into that area and speed. The state traffic commission looked into it, and they had done their study. And I was, they had sent me the results of that. And the results of that study, unfortunately, were not as we see them here in the city who travel that road. So I, I'll be looking at for more information from them. But they have that after review based on the highway, Federal Highway Association, that that intersection does not meet the speeds that exceed 45 miles an hour, which I expect to differ because we know, after multiple conversations, that people do travel down Pawtucket Ave more than 45 miles an hour. So secondly, they state that at any given time, Monday through Saturday, at peak hours in the AM and peak hours in the PM, that the vehicles do not exceed more than 40 vehicles passing through that intersection, which, again, I, I disagree with. I think a lot more than 40 cars go through that intersection in that, that light. So I, this resolution that I have before the council is requesting that the mayor's office, police department, and the public works department do conduct a study, an independent study for the city to determine what the actual high usage in that intersection is as a concerns to safety. And that that traffic study be done within 30 days of passage of this resolution, and that the city present their findings to the entire city council 10 days after completion of the study for further follow-up.
I just have one question regarding, because this wasn't posted on the Secretary of State's website, can we vote on this without the public viewing initially?
You can. You just need to have a motion to amend. I can walk the council through what the replacement language is. So it would be two motions. The first motion would be to amend the resolution as read. Then the second motion would be whether to approve or not approve the motion as read. The, the language that changed was in the now, therefore, be it resolved paragraph. The remainder of the resolution is the same. The way the now, therefore, be it resolved paragraph reads now, and I would encourage any of those following Home Alone, it's effectively a total scratch and a completely new paragraph will be easiest to understand in that manner. So the new language is, quote, that the city council of the city of East Providence hereby request the study of the intersection of Pawtucket Avenue and Waterman Avenue regarding a left turn signal light from northbound Pawtucket Avenue to westbound Waterman Avenue to be completed within 30, 30 days. to be completed within 30, 30 days of the passage of this resolution. And further request that the results of said study be provided to the entire council within 10, 10 days of completion." So that's the, the amendment is the language as read.
So Councilwoman, you're saying have a left turn? Because right now, if I'm not mistaken, it's a delay.
Nope, they're really, no.
So if you're heading from, if you're heading.
To the high school.
South, from.
So if we're heading to the high school from.
Ken Heights.
Ken Heights. And you want to turn towards the senior center on Waterman Avenue.
Oh, the senior center, okay.
There's no, yeah, there's no turn light, there's no delay.
I thought you were going the opposite direction towards the police department.
No, they have a, they have a left turn signal there.
Okay, right.
And so, and that was one of the things that the state traffic commission said, well, we can delay the lights on the opposite end, but that's essentially not going to really do anything. If, if the intersection warrants a left turn light to go towards the police station on Warren Avenue, then it subsequently would also require, warrant one turning on towards the senior center and they could be going at the same time, which would be efficient.
And during this morning's legislative breakfast, and correct me if I'm wrong, Representative Formar, you had mentioned that that area there is going to be repaved or done over as well. So they are going to be doing some work in there.
Correct.
And so this is something that I have CC'd all our delegates.
Have a left-hand turn.
To have this left-hand turn, so I'm assuming that they're all supporting us on the state level to have this done.
And if you're in that lane, you're screwed. Literally, not even take the left to go straight, but if you get a car that, one car that's taking a left.
I'd be curious to know what the accident rate is at that intersection.
It's pretty, I'm sure it's pretty significant because there's always, always near misses, but there are certainly a lot of accidents because one person can stop to let you go, but then the person coming in that farthest right lane doesn't see you and then that's how you're getting clipped at the nose. So it's a huge safety issue in that intersection and I really think that it needs to be addressed by the state and this is, you know, I don't concur with their study and I'd like us to do our own and I know that the police department has the capability of doing that in DPW, so I'd love to compare ours to theirs and see where the short forms are.
Is that in the form of a motion?
It is, so I make a motion to amend the resolution requesting a traffic study at Pawtucket Avenue and Waterman Ave intersection as read by our assistant city solicitor.
Second.
And we'll have a roll call vote.
Could it include the council president's language that you're screwed in that lane, Mr. Godley?
You get stuck in that lane.
It's bad.
Councilwoman Kahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Roderick.
Aye.
Oh, I didn't realize you were Councilman Roderick. Councilman Morato.
Aye.
Councilman Roderick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Councilman Brito, aye, thank you.
Now I make a motion to pass the resolution as stated.
Can the rabbi have a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Councilwoman Kahoon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Morato.
Aye.
Councilman Roderick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Councilman Brito, aye.
Dizzy?
Not yet. Okay. Next resolution, resolution two on page four, resolution in support of 2020 H-7430, 2020 H-7480 and 2020 dash S-2285 relating to primary, primary election date, sponsored by Councilwoman Souza.
So this resolution is something that is supporting bills in the senate and in the house currently now as it stands, are, some of our current year and upcoming elections fall on Tuesdays and it would cause some, it has to do with the holiday, Labor Day and how it would cause cities and towns to be adding additional expenses because of municipalities working. So this would essentially ask that it be moved to a Wednesday in the years that the primary is held on the same week as Labor Day.
That's correct.
So it would be moved from Labor Day.
So it would be moved, right, it would be moved to a Wednesday versus Labor Day.
Is that a motion?
So.
What was it, for discussion?
Anybody want?
Anyone have any questions?
Motion.
No, it makes sense with the Labor Day holiday, I would second that motion if you made a motion, Councilwoman.
Motion's been made.
Second. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor and a second it.
So we'll take a roll call vote. Mr. President, so Councilwoman Kahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Roderick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council President Brito.
Aye.
I'm sorry if I did that out of order, okay.
Anything works.
All right, so the next item on the agenda, Mr. President, is a resolution rescinding, repealing and replacing resolution number 59 regarding the submission of a grant application to the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management Recreation Development Grant Program sponsored by Councilman Morato.
I think I've talked about this at length and I think the public and the council knows where I stand on this. Your pleasure, would you like me to read the resolution or just make a motion or just put it out for discussion?
Maybe, let me just, how long is a resolution?
It's about 20 sentences, Mr. President.
You want to just briefly go over it and skim through it or you want me to read through it?
So resolution rescinding, repealing and replacing resolution number 59 regarding the submission of a grant application to the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management Recreation Development Grant Program. Whereas on or about December 3rd, 2019, the East Providence City Council passed resolution number 59 and said resolution was recorded in book 27 on page 73. Whereas said resolution authorized the planning department to submit the necessary grant application to the state of Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management Recreation Development Grant Program for improvements of Grassy Plains Park. Whereas said resolution did not specify or otherwise limit the form of recreational improvements of Grassy Plains Park. Whereas this resolution revokes and replaces Sid December 3rd, 2019, resolution number 59, recorded in book 27, page 73. Whereas this resolution authorized the planning department to submit the necessary grant application to the state of Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management Recreation Development Grant Program for improvements of Grassy Plains Park, but such improvements shall conform to the original uses set forth for the Grassy Plains Park in January 17th, 1975, environmental assessment outlined, signed on or about July 17th, 1975. Whereas the council approves of the use of the previously allocated $150,000 matching grant funds for the improvement of Grassy Plains Park regardless of the outcome of any such grant application to the state of Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management Recreation Development Grant Program. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the city council or the city of East Providence does not support the use of the 150 allocated to Grassy Plains Park in accordance with the used, uses outlined in the January 17th, 1975 environmental assessment outline. This resolution shall take effect upon passage. I just want to add just one more thing. So I did make, did a little research and I did contact Rhode Island DEM, I did speak to the chief executor, chief executive, chief planning, division of planning and development in this email that I've passed out to the council, okay? And what I was told was that by rescinding, first of all, the evaluations, the scoring has already been done, all right? Now it's just a matter of waiting for those numbers to come back and knowing if we're going to be awarded that grant. By rescinding this resolution, it does not hurt us in applying for other grants in the future as outlined in the memo sent to us last night or yesterday. So I just want to put everyone at ease at that. The other thing too, if this grant is awarded, from what I understand, there's going to be community meetings and the only part I don't understand is if it's done by the council, DEM or joint. And in those public meetings, if they, once again, find out the public does not want the soccer, it doesn't mean that the grant's dead, it just means that, you know, will be awarded minus what would have cost for soccer fields. Everything is spelled out on that email that I had printed out and as I said, I'm just, I just want to put this behind us. I mean, everyone knows my position, I've heard the residents that I represent in my ward and who voted me in and I just want to get this out there and, you know, put it to the pleasure of the council as to what the vote would be.
Any further discussion from the council?
So, yeah, and Mr. Morato and I have discussed this and my position, my general principle is, and given, given the feedback that we've had from the community, which I understand, I generally don't support not asking for money, right? So we've got a situation where we're asking for matching funds, as I understand, what ultimately becomes, should we get the grant, what ultimately becomes of that park is still very much to be determined and I would, myself, I would not support rescinding the request for the, for the funds because, because of that, right? If we have an opportunity to shape what that becomes, then let's, you know, let's encourage that opportunity. Without the funding, you know, our opportunity is reduced, so that's, that's my position.
Yeah, I also want to make just a corrective note, so if you look at that last paragraph on this resolution, now therefore let it be resolved, there should be the word not after the word does, so does not support. Right now, it's reading does support. You see that, Solicitor?
I do.
Is that just a, can I?
Is that the last paragraph?
Yes.
Not therefore be it resolved?
Yes, the last word and the first sentence does, should be followed by not.
I, okay.
I'm taking it to make a motion to.
Mr. President.
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, I'm sorry.
Yeah, if I may, I would like a brief moment to confer with the council. I aided in drafting this and I want to make sure we get the language correct.
Sure.
Yeah. Right, we have. Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry about that, my mistake. Yeah, so it does, it's as written, it basically, it's saying that we do still support the 150, the 150,000 allocated to go towards the improvement of Grassy Plains Park regardless if we are awarded the grant or not, so the language is correct. Apologize for that.
So Councilman, it's, correct me if I'm wrong, they're saying that in event, the application itself, the processes already began and with that being said, this will what again? This resolution?
This resolution has, due to the fact that, I just found this out today, but I still want to put this out for note, due to the fact that the grant application has already been submitted.
Does it not have an effect?
This is not going to have any effect on that at this moment.
Or for future grants as well.
And as stated by the chief planning director for the state DEM, I understand that her exact words are, neither withdrawal nor subsequent re-scoping of the project would reflect poorly on the city for this or for future funding rounds. So that's right out of the planning of the email.
Thank you for that clarification. Any further discussion from the council?
Yes, President, Councilman, while I appreciate all your effort in this, why I do not want to support this is for a couple of reasons. One, as you stated, the application's been in, it's already been, I think the word was scored, so in effect, it's been graded, it's been scored, we're just waiting for a decision and it's kind of unusual to renege on an application that we put in for monies. We, we have an opportunity to get about half a million dollars by spending 150,000 and the research that I've done is that we as the council still retain final say in that project. So why not let the process finish, let's get the money and then there will be a series of public hearings, of studies, of surveys and if we don't, it's like a zoning project, it's a project, it's like what may happen at Metacomet as an example. Until we as a council and a zoning board make final decisions, they're not going to just go in there and build what they want. Same thing at Grassy Plain, we know the neighborhood, the immediate neighborhood does not want a soccer complex, so I'm sure we're going to listen to a lot of that. But when they say it won't hurt us in the future, it won't on paper, but knowing how the legislative process works, someone in Walco and Socket or Cranston could get to this department and say, hey, other cities, there's only so much money in the pool and right now I think we have a shot of getting some money to fix up a dilapidated recreational area and I'm not going to approve it to the extent that initially, you know, we thought might be in there, big soccer complex. Soccer groups in the city have said to us, have said to me, they didn't ask for that either. There may be one all-purpose field or something, but I'm, I'm even putting that ahead of myself. We're not at that stage yet, we retain the right to any final design, so why confuse it? We've got a state agency that's already scored this, has, is about to make a decision and now they're going to get a correspondence that says, well, wait a minute, we don't want it.
I could address that, so in further email communications with this person today, as she said, it won't affect the review process in any way, but if the city is anticipating to review an award but wishes to reimagine the scope of the work, we will be able to jump, jumpstart this, be able to jumpstart that conversation. As I mentioned before and I'll say it again, and I don't want to walk through the whole history of this thing, okay? I think we were shortsighted as far as misrepresenting, the facts were misrepresented to us, okay? Had I known that there was a whole conversation on this years prior, months prior, I would have never voted for that on the 11th hour, okay? When this application process, if you look at the date, was completed on August 27th, they're on the 11th hour, we're getting this jammed down our throats, okay? I would have never voted for that, I would have had that community meeting long before that vote. So I understand to your point, but I also, I also, I'm going to take value in this experts, you know, right from the DEM grant person right here, the chief planning director. I represent, I represent the members of my ward, I am going to be the voice of the members that elected me for my ward and I respect everyone's opinion here and I'm just done talking about it, I just want to put it to a vote and.
Yep, I agree and I don't want to belabor it either, but just finally, I would say, grant money does dry up. They might say they'll look at us favorably in the future, but that's if the money's available. They might not have that $500,000 that we'd like to get. And then finally, we do retain final project approval, so we're not losing anything by let's, let's get the money and, yes, the neighborhood, but it's also a city park, so I want to look at the big picture as well.
Thank you. I had the opportunity of driving by there last weekend and long and behold, did I know that, I used to play football there every year, I didn't understand that it was called Grassy Plain at the time. So a group of us would get together every Columbus Day weekend, that Sunday about, and we would play 15 on 15, old timers playing flag football. And we would start about 11 o'clock in the morning, we'd go throughout the entire day at a friend of mine's property, a butted Grassy Plain at the time and we'd play football there that Sunday and it was a potluck and we had a few drinks, watched football and we had abundance of food there as well. So initially, early on, I didn't know the park, so I took the initiative to take, ah, let me go see what it looks like. Went by there and I said, I know exactly where Grassy Plain is, I played many years of football in there, with a group of guys here, we play 15 on 15 every year, Labor Day weekend. With that being said, I took a little tour around the park and it doesn't look as bad as everybody described it during the last meeting I was in, I thought it was in pretty good shape, fairly shape. However, when I voted the first time, because of the reasons that I had given, I voted against this and, you know, to stay. And, you know, to stay consistent with what I voted on before, and more importantly, just hearing the overwhelming amount of people that came here and spoke out against it, everybody was for doing something for it, but everybody wasn't for the actual plan itself. So, I, I will say what I said, I would say today, as I said in the past, that I didn't support it then, and I won't support it now. We have 150, as long as that 150 is still being allocated, the grant is still in process, it doesn't harm the process in an event that this resolution goes through this. And if it is approved, we still now have to include the community as to what type of park it's going to be. So, that's where I stand as far as this resolution is concerned.
So, I just want to clarify. So, this resolution, as I understand it, is we're still allocating the funds to the park, we're not rescinding our grant proposal, it's just the plan that was proposed, the structure in which they were proposing the field. Is that correct?
Correct. We're rescinding the proposal.
It's, and to resubmit it minus the soccer field and, you know, that baseball field, whatever they want to build there.
So, we're taking back the, the, the grant, saying we don't want that grant, we're reapplying for a grant? Is that correct?
So, functionally, what the resolution achieves, if you look back to the original resolution, it's a DEM request that there be an authorization from the council that sufficient matching funds will be present and that be located to a particular site. So, what this resolution does is it replaces the original resolution, which had no restrictions in any way, shape, or form as to what was going to occur. This gives the same exact authorization and the same exact funding as the original resolution. So, DEM's request for authorization and funding remain constant, there's no impact to the application in any way, shape, or form. This additionally states that the council seeks that the Grassy Plains Park be in conformance with the uses outlined in the January 17, 1975 Environmental Assessment Outline. So, the only distinction between this authorization and funds and the previous authorization and funds is this cites to the original documents that kind of set forth Grassy Plains. Resolutions are non-binding. This goes to the, the important conversation that this council just had regarding scope. So, this resolution sort of informs what the considered scope would be, whereas the original resolution did not have anything regarding scope. So, in a nutshell, no impact whatsoever on the present grant, additional information regarding what this council wishes may happen there eventually. None of this is binding, no impact on present grant or funding.
Well, I have to, what does it do? There's no impact, and so we could still get the 500,000 regardless of this vote?
Correct.
So, what are we trying to do then? What are we?
I'm trying to show that this is the wish of the council, whether it be one way or another, like we do with every other resolution. I'm trying to, to show that I am the voice of the people in my ward, and I want, I would like to kind of put this to rest. But if we do get awarded that 500,000, at least the administration knows that this is the, the direction that the council wants to go when that, you know, award come up, award is granted, if it's granted. It's not a guarantee either way.
So, I think that, so from what I'm understanding, it's not as an, an open slate, like a, to do whatever you choose to? It is based on what was initially discussed in prior 1975 assessment outlines, what they, they envisioned that park to be, and that's what they want to continue it, that vision, and not a blank slate to do.
I, I don't, I don't see that as what the solicitor's saying. We're not talking about back in the 70s, we're talking about the original vote this council made.
That referencing the, the 75 contract that was signed July 17, 1975, it's still, explain the, the desire of the community then and now as to what that park should be. They want to bring it back to where it was, right? So, and back then, it didn't include soccer, you know, complexes and whatnot. And this is the intent of this resolution, to say, look, if you are granted this 500,000, this is the desire of, you know, the people and the desire of the council. So, whether or not, whatever the administration does after that, then that's something I guess we'll have to have more conversations and meetings and such. But I just want to send a message now that if it is granted, this is the desire of the council and the people, and depending on which way this vote goes, which I don't know. As mentioned in this, as I mentioned before, the, you know, when that comes up, there's going to be planning, there's, there's going to be other meetings. And even if the, you know, the residents come out again and say, we don't want soccer fields, or we want soccer fields, it's not as if the, the way it was explained to me by Ms., Mr. Preet, it's not as if, you know, they're going to pack their bags and leave, it's just going to be modified to exclude, you know, those projects from the grant, you know, amount. So, it's not like we're losing the whole thing and all we're jeopardizing. And as you clearly stated, it doesn't jeopardize anything, you know, so.
So, I mean, I guess not to belabor it. I do have an issue with going back to a document that was in place before I was born. January 17, 1975 Environmental Assessment Outline, maybe that's what we want to do. I think ultimately, what we want to do is hear what the residents of the community want now. I certainly don't want to tie it to a 45-year-old document that was put in place before, you know, the ADA Compliance Act and a number of other, you know, federal laws that, you know, have kind of changed the way that we look at public spaces. So, I, I appreciate exactly what, what Ms. Morato was saying. I understand that what we want to do is we want to ultimately create a space that serves as many people as possible and makes the immediate residents happy, and I support that 100%. I just can't get on board with the resolution, right? So, ultimately, when we get to that point, I'm with you, I just, I can't be there right now.
Okay, very good. Mr. Morato, you want to put that in the form of a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to put out to a vote, motion.
Anyone like to second that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call vote.
So, we'll go down the end. Councilwoman Souza?
Aye.
Councilmember Morato?
Aye.
Council Vice President Roderick?
Nay.
Now, we'll go to Councilman Kahoon, I vote nay. Councilman, Council President Brito?
Aye.
Okay, so we have a three to two in favor.
Yes, in favor of the resolution.
Thank you. So, Mr. President, if I may?
Yes.
Some information has come to me since we discussed the parking lot expansion. We had a question as to where the balance of the funding would come from. Mr. Fattaro has advised me from the mayor that the plan is for that funding to come from, through the available Google funds. So, the balance of 83,000 some odd dollars, I think, would be funded by way of the available Google money and not through a specific police department line. So, given that that was the question, I do not know, and I know that we tabled it, I do not know if the council has an appetite to revisit this item.
Reconsider.
Reconsider this item.
So, with that being said, I'd like to put a motion, oh, can I?
You can request it.
Okay.
I'd like to put a, to, motion to reconsider a docket item.
I will second that motion.
Shouldn't that, shouldn't that language be in that resolution spelled out, so that there's no confusion?
Can we amend it?
We can amend it.
amend it on the floor.
One, yes, but one motion at a time.
Right, right.
Sorry. What agenda item is it? So, the agenda item is number four.
So, residents are authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for the police station parking lot extension, expansion. I make a motion to reconsider.
Reconsider. And I'll second that motion.
And roll call vote.
Would you like a roll call vote? Councilwoman Souza?
Aye.
Councilmember Morato?
Aye.
Councilman Kahoon?
Aye.
Council Vice President Roderick?
Aye.
Council President Brito?
Aye.
Now, I'd like to make a motion to amend the resolution that the amount of $80,438 is being, is coming from the Google fund account from the police station.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Councilwoman Souza? I apologize, I'm going to need to look at the resolution and find the specific place where that's going in for the amendment. I'm just trying to catch up with the...
So, whereas the project...
From the back.
Do you want me to read that?
So, um, it should be in the now therefore clause.
Okay.
So, we'll change the last period of now therefore be resolved to a comma.
Hold on one second, if I may, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt. Perhaps the better place for it is, there's the fourth paragraph down where it says, whereas the balance of the project will be funded through available police department funds, perhaps the better amendment is to change that to, whereas the balance of the project will be funded through available...
Google fund account.
Google, yeah, and I don't know that Google is the right, is it the asset forfeiture account or?
Asset forfeiture account, further known as Google funds.
Yeah, yeah, okay, the asset, let's, let's spell that out. The balance of the project will be funded through available asset forfeiture funds known as the Google account and...
Yes.
And I think that that would do the job, and I don't know if that meets the intent of your motion, Councilwoman Souza.
It is.
Okay.
Do we have a second on that motion?
I'll second it.
Roll call vote.
Councilwoman Souza?
Aye.
Councilmember Morato?
Aye.
Councilman Kahoon says aye. Council Vice President Roderick?
Aye.
Council President Brito?
Aye.
Thank you, moving right along.
Mr. Chair, sorry, in the absence of the clerk, who made the motion in the second?
I made the motion.
I second it.
And that was to make the, the amendment, and then I make a motion to approve the resolution as amended.
That is required.
And the second for the amendment was me.
Thank you.
Or reconsideration, sorry.
Yes, I got that one.
All right.
So, there's a, I have a motion to approve the amended resolution, is there a second?
The second was Ms. Morato.
Morato.
Roll call.
And we had a, yeah.
Nope, this is, there's three parts.
We need one more roll call vote.
So, it was a recall, an amendment, and now an approval.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I thought we were counting something.
He seconded it anyway.
Just gave you a second, my apologies. All right, so roll call vote.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza?
Councilmember Morato? Aye.
Councilman Kahoon, aye. Council Vice President Roderick?
Aye.
And Council President Brito?
Aye.
Next item, which is the final ordinance in B, page six, letter B, page six.
Mr. President, I believe we're, section C, one section, subsection one, subsection capital A, this is bottom of page five, an ordinance and amendment of chapter 18 of the revised ordinance of the city of East Providence, Rhode Island, 1998, as amended, entitled Vehicles and Traffic. This is sponsored by Councilwoman Souza.
That I crossed off my list. I apologize.
No, this is...
Didn't we do this?
No, we didn't. This is a resolution for, I'm sorry, thank you, this is an ordinance for first passage that Article 10, entitled Stopping, Standing, and Parking, of Chapter 18 for Vehicles and Traffic. This would be the point of Juniper Street, south side, starting from Point 115 West on Lion Ave, west, westerly, for a distance of 185 feet, that there be a no parking between the hours of 6:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, in that zone. So, this came about, just quickly, the, again, narrow road, narrow streets, vehicles parking on both sides of the street. There was issue with emergency vehicles and primarily school buses trying to make turns from 9th Street onto Juniper Street. They weren't able to make that turn, that right, left-hand turn because of cars being parked. There's also a bus stop that's adjacent, slightly down further, and it just became a safety issue. I did vet it out with the neighbors in that immediate area in which it pertains, and they were all in conformed thinking, saying that it is an issue, they would prefer it to be a limited parking so that they wouldn't have these issues during peak time and travel. So, if the council has no questions or comments, I move for first passage.
Just to clarify, Councilwoman Souza, under the section one, where it's got the description on Juniper Street, Juniper Street, south side, starting from a point 115 feet west?
No, 115 west, feet west, yeah.
Okay.
I think so. Is that correct here? Some typos.
Yeah, I, I'll have to refer to whatever the procedural words I was drafting this and whatever format we standardly use. There's no marker identified here. We would need a motion to amend, to add the word feet.
Make a motion to add the word feet after 115.
I'll second.
Roll call vote.
Councilwoman Souza?
Aye.
Councilmember Morato?
Aye.
Councilman Kahoon votes aye. Council Vice President Roderick?
Aye.
Council President Brito?
Aye.
With that clarified, no?
Now, I make a motion to approve first passage.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call vote.
Councilwoman Souza?
Aye.
Councilmember Morato?
Aye.
Councilman Kahoon says aye. Council Vice President Roderick?
Aye.
Council President Brito?
Aye.
This is hard.
Oh, it's very hard. I, I actually do need a request, who made the motion in the second on both, the amend on both and approve? And the seconds were...
Kahoon?
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Second ordinance to be considered, it's first passage, section 18-307, entitled Parking Prohibited at All Times, Parking Standing and Stopping, Chapter 18 of the revised ordinance of the city of East Providence, Rhode Island, 1998, as amended, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, as amended by adding here to the following, Juniper Street, south side from Lion Ave, westerly, from a distance of 40, 75 feet. That would be, again, it's from the corner of essentially the stop sign at the end of Juniper Street where Lion Ave begins, 70 feet upwards on Juniper Street would be a section of no parking, again, having to do with traffic, getting out of driveways, being not able to stop at the stop sign if people are parked on both sides. You're essentially just, nobody can turn in if you're at the stop sign to try to turn out.
So, this is for both sides?
Nope, one side, the south side.
South side.
So, both amend, both ordinances affect the south side of Juniper Street. So, parking on the north side is prohibited, is available, is not, right, prohibited. So, I make a motion to approve first passage.
I'll second.
Roll call vote.
Councilwoman Souza?
Aye.
Councilmember Morato?
Aye.
Councilman Kahoon says aye. Council Vice President Roderick?
Aye.
Council President Brito?
Aye.
Nailed it.
Next item.
The next item, Mr. President, is to reconvene in an executive session as necessary, presumably not necessary, so I move to adjourn.
A second.
I'm with you.
You want to roll call vote? Councilwoman Souza?
Aye.
Councilmember Morato?
Aye.
Councilman Kahoon votes aye. Council Vice President Roderick?
Aye.
Council President Brito?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, good job. Councilman Kahoon?
Bonjour, salut.